Before we start.
The meeting, if you haven't realized, there are agendas over on the table behind that far camera. If you want to pick one up, you're welcome. And it is six o'clock, so we will call to order the July 14th meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of East Peoria. First order is roll call.
Driscoll.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Tippett.
Here.
Broschiers.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
We have a court.
Okay. Next item is approval of the minutes from the meeting held on June 9th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting on June 9th.
Thank you, Tim. Do I have a second?
I'll second them.
Thank you, George.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Okay, the first case then for public hearings is Case V-2025-003. That's the petition of Kelsey Spangler for a variance to allow a six-foot privacy fence in the front yard on property located at 135 Shoshone Drive. That property ID is 01-01-23-406-015. Will the petitioner approach the podium, please? And will you state your names for me?
Drew Spangler.
Kelsey Spangler.
Okay, and will you both raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and tell the board what you are planning to do. We've got some, obviously, information from you, so we've got some of the drawings and things, but go ahead and explain it.
Yeah, I'm just here to, today to respectfully request a zoning variance to install a six-foot privacy fence in my front yard. Like, while the property is situated where a road meets my front yard on a curve and not technically a corner lot, the current zoning regulations still significantly limit the fence height in my front yard. This prevents adequate privacy and security, creating a unique hardship that hinders my ability to fully utilize and enjoy the property. A taller fence would be able, would provide a much-needed barrier for privacy and security, I believe. I made a little. I also have plans for the fence to be made of an attractive, like, cedar rather than a less, my personal opinion, chain-link fence. Adding this well-designed fence would also help improve the look of my home so that it is more in line with the others in the area. Some of the other houses in my neighborhood have really nice fences, and I would like to add to that aesthetic. And I believe this variance will not negatively impact the neighbor's character. In fact, it will maintain visual harmony with similar fencing solutions already pleasant within the vicinity. I've been in contact with a few who asked me about the variance, and they have been on board, so we're just here to petition that.
Okay, questions for the Spanglers. Tim?
I have no questions.
Sure. Michael?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
Don?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Okay, so you're, you've shown this here, and I assume you've got property lines and then the fence, and the fence is right on the property line is what you're hoping to do, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And do you know how far your property line is from the, from the road, from the curb?
I do not, not, other than what's on the map, I'm not sure.
Okay. And it's not showing much, I'm trying to look it up as well. Okay, I think that's all I had, thank you.
And we are willing to be flexible as well, wherever it needs to be.
Yeah.
George?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the house on the left side, there's a bunch of bushes and there's chain-link fence that runs behind that.
Correct.
Is that your property line?
Yes.
That is the property line?
Mm-hmm.
So, you're leaving that there, and you're just gonna put the fence across the front, right?
Correct.
Okay, what about the other side of the house?
The other side of the house, our property line ends about six feet from that side of the home, and along that is the property owned, or that property is owned by the apartments.
Okay.
So there would not be a fence along there.
You're not gonna put a fence there?
No.
We would like to just close off the very, very back, so be flush with the house.
Okay.
Just where, like, the, there's a back deck and the bushes are, we'd just like to close that little section off.
Right, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
So I think that clarified something for me. So basically, if I'm right, your fence is gonna be sort of L-shaped.
Correct.
Across the back of the property and then down the side to what is not really your second front yard, but I mean, it is, because you're on the inside corner.
Right.
And have you talked to anybody at the city, or did you look at the rules about how far back from the curb that fence might have to end?
We reached out to, I believe it's Brad Butler, I think is his name.
How about Brad Brewer?
Brewer, yes, thank you, sorry. There's a lot of Brads that I talk to daily, so.
And it wasn't a test on my part either.
And Ty Livingston was a part of that conversation as well. We just proposed what we were discussing, and then we sent them the site plans. We did not ask specifics on, like, where the actual property line begins and ends, we just saw that site map. But like I said, wherever it needs to be to conform with, you know, if it's three feet back, four feet back, whatever it needs to be, just as long as we have more room to utilize right now. The backyard is practically non-existent, so it would be nice to be able to utilize that side.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Any more questions for the Spanglers from the board? Okay, seeing none, you two can have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the board on this particular case? Great. Seeing none, we will move on then to the next case of the evening, and that is Case SU-2025-006, and that's petition of Yvonne Long of Hoka Tololo for special use to allow ground-mounted solar installation on property located at 304 South Pleasant Hill Road. Property ID number is 05-05-12-102-005. Will the petitioner approach the podium? Okay, and will you all state your names and how you are related to the petitioner or the property?
Yvonne Long, with Hoka Tololo, the petitioner.
Okay.
Jacob Clark, Director of Worship and Communications at Crosspoint Church.
Okay.
Beth Con, Trustee over Maintenance of the Facility and the Property.
Okay, will you all three raise your right hand for me? Will you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and proceed, thank you.
Thank you. We're proposing to install what is essentially one row of modules that it will provide power to both the church and the education building. And this would be under the Illinois Solar For All program, that's, that is heavily monitored, but provides deep incentives that allow for significant energy savings through this project. The Illinois Solar For All program specifically targets communities that are environmental justice communities, Illinois communities, and so the church location qualifies under that category. And so the, again, one row, it's about 100 into, approximately 102 feet, 13-foot wide, eight-foot tall. There's two rows of screening that run on the Pleasant Hill side, and then there's partial screening through the, through the back along with a couple berms around the parking area where this would be facing due south in order to maximize production, and then really heavy tree lines along the trails, and so.
Our church has recently sought to have more of a presence in our community. We recently built a community park on our grounds to provide a playground, which was not something that we had within at least one-mile radius of the church property, there was not a public playground. We've previously cooperated with the city and the Park District to get some access to there, and we're seeking to do this because finances are tough for churches. Finances are tough for everybody right now, especially with utility costs. And this will enable us to have more resources to better serve our community, whether it's with a food pantry or improvements to our community park plot that we do, or other ministry opportunities as we see. We really believe that God has called us to the place that we are at, and we really believe that we're supposed to do good in our neighborhood, and we believe that this is a way that we can continue to do that.
Questions for the three of them. Tim?
I don't have any questions.
Michael?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
Don?
All right. Okay, I got a few questions.
Sure.
So it was hard to see on the map, but it appears, or in the, in the aerial photo here, but Brad was showing me, it appears to, this is gonna be right behind the paved area, correct? Like, right behind the?
Yeah, so there's, from that area, there's like a three-and-a-half to four-foot drop of a slope, and then it's gonna be at the base of that slope.
Okay, and, and it's gonna be pointing south, I assume. Now, I think we were told there's gonna be three different racks or something, but is it gonna be in one line, is that correct?
It's just one rev module, it's one, one racking system.
Okay.
And then, I believe it's too wide for the modules, so there's 54 modules, and the length is approximately 102 feet.
102 feet, and how wide is it then?
It's 13-foot wide, and it's eight-foot tall, and the bottom clearance is 30 inches, approximately, to the ground.
So when you say, you say eight-foot tall, that's the tallest spot.
The tallest point of the racking.
And 30 inches is the smallest. And are these, are they fixed?
Yes.
You know, so they're not gonna be moving or anything like that?
No.
Now, you talked about screening, I think, on the south and the east, is that correct?
Mostly for into the east.
Mostly on the east side, and then on the north side in relation to the trees, but it's, if you will, kind of a curvature. So, up off of Pleasant Hill, it goes all the way up towards where, like, right before Frevent, where the trail is. And then the tree line goes out back close to what looks like maybe the second house off Bloomington Road. And so there's, there's two rows of fences, there's a playground that faces out Pleasant Hill that the kiddos can play on, and that, so that's the kind of partial screening that I'm talking about that exists already.
Okay. And, okay, and that was on the east side, you said?
Mm-hmm.
And did you say there were some on the, gonna be some on the south or the west as well, or did you not?
No, on the, the, the south side is facing the parking lot, it's facing due south. So any screening that we would put on that south side would actually cost shading on the solar asset and would impact production, so we can't put anything there.
Okay. So the screening you're using is just the natural stuff that's already there?
It's all, and that, yeah, well, then, the hard, the hard fence, that's already, there's two chain link sets of chain-link fences there.
Chain-link fence, yes.
And then, yeah, existing.
There's a swing set between those two fences as well that kind of detracts, that kind of distracts visually a little bit as well.
More like a play yard, several feet tall.
Yeah, it's, it's like, like, yeah, the kiddos are out there, well, they'll play outside there in that front area facing Pleasant Hill. And then, like you said, the backside, there's, there's actually a tremendous amount of, like, parking capacity because back through this area could be overflow parking, but also when you have, like, what, the food pantry that, where you'll need, where people come up through the backside as well, right?
Yeah, we have people that park in some areas of that backlot, not directly next to where the solar asset's gonna be constructed, but we do sometimes use that as overflow parking for different things.
And why, how did you come up with this amount of solar panels? Why not more, why not less?
Okay, so what we do is evaluate what the, the consumption pattern looks like for our, for our customers, and the program itself is, is not designed to provide more solar production than what the organization can use. And so the intent is that through net metering, they're gonna be able to offset what they would have to get from the grid. To overproduce would, would cause them to, to not save as much money. So we're at about a, like, 90-plus percent, but we're, we don't want to produce more than what they would have to use, the intent, again, is to save them money. So they're purchasing kilowatt-hours at a cheaper rate than they would have to purchase it from the utility.
And is that for both buildings? The church building as well across the street?
Yeah, so there's two different meters, and the one array would service both, both of those buildings.
Okay. Did you think about putting these anywhere else on the property?
Matt?
There was initially a question about use of the roof of the education building.
Yeah.
That's, that was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, I could see you were going there. That roof, so the Illinois Solar For All program requires a 15-year lifespan on the roof as they're inspected, and the inspectors that Hoka Tololo provided said that we had that 15 years, but that the roof was not in great shape due to previous damage. And I, I was up there a couple weeks ago, the roof is a roof, and.
I'm looking at the, yeah, the aerial view right now, and yeah, I, 15 years is good for you. I mean, it, it looks like, you know, it looks like it's aging, no doubt about it.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was an option that you guys had looked at.
Yeah, it, it was an option, but ultimately, it seemed to be more feasible, especially because we live in an area that has a lot of severe weather. Hail damage is a thing to the roof, and then you have to remove the, the panels, and that's just more hassle than it's worth with some of this, and it decreases the production of the asset as well.
I was just gonna mention the backside further back.
Yes.
Simply because that area is what the kiddos use to, you know, in the summertime programs, launching potatoes or whatever fun stuff they're doing back there.
Yeah.
So that part is very usable off to the, more off to the west side, it, there's actually some retainage of water, and so to move it, shift it over there, it, you know, risks the racking being, you know, where there, there could be too much water.
And we also lose the natural screening of that berm as well if it gets moved more out into that open field as well.
Okay. And, and there is that, there's a fence, is that correct, from, I was out there earlier today, and I just don't remember all this, but there's a fence from the, from the playground or the parking lot all the way back to the tree line, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how, how tall is that fence?
Four foot.
It's a four-foot chain, right?
I would estimate it.
Okay. I think that's all I had, thank you.
Just one question, so on Bloomington Road's side, so the, so those are gonna come like this, is, is there any way you could put, like, something there, not even close to it, just so the people going down Bloomington Road or the houses over there don't have to look at the structure of this? You know, wouldn't have to be real tall.
In terms of the side of it? Because it won't face Bloomington, and it'll just be the edge that?
Right.
It'll just come with the edge of it.
That would face, that would, yeah.
Yeah, right, okay.
We thought of several different things, we're not sure we wanna put additional fencing around it, just so that we can maintain underneath it. We can always consider putting greenscape, but we have to be careful that it's far enough away not to cast a shadow.
Right, right, yeah. I'm, I'm just, you know, thinking of something just to take away from that structure, you know, that, they're not that ugly, but they're not that pretty either, let's say, so, you know.
Well, as, as the head trustee on maintenance of the property, it is something that we will consider. We have not found a greenscape that is appropriate at this time. It needs to stay about six-foot or eight-foot tall. And so it's not casting a long shadow onto the solar, so.
Right, right, understand that.
We haven't found the correct perennial that stays in that and meets those needs, so we're, I, I've looked at a couple things, but didn't come up with anything in the last two weeks.
Okay. That's all I have.
And then I heard good things over the weekend about the playground and how the kids in the neighborhood are using it. Will the solar panels be in an area where the kids playing in the playground can't get to them?
They can, if they're not supervised, they can open fence gates and get to, they'd have to open two fence gates in order to get to it.
Okay.
It's, it's a pretty hefty distance from the primary play area. That, that, that playground is largely on the Pleasant Hill side of that area.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you're, if you're looking at the property, that, that far east fence along the, along the easement and the drainage distance right there, most of the playground is pretty close to that fence.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a hefty amount of yards there.
Have you thought about maybe putting some signage on the fence or the gates that say something about being a secured area or not part of the playground, or something, I guess, just to kind of give people a heads up that they can't wander in, and?
We can definitely consider that, if that's not a large task to do.
Not, right, right, just to kind of cover your bases and say, look, we, we told you, you shouldn't be there, that's not a part of the playground, or that's private property, or whatever, so, okay. And the people, just to reiterate, not only for the audience, but anybody watching now or later, so the people that live on Bloomington Road are really looking at the perpendicular, just the edge of this line of panels, not the expanse, but just the side edge.
Cor, correct.
That's correct, okay.
It, it would depend on where they were viewing it at.
Sure.
I, I took a walk along that far side of Bloomington Road, just right along the edge, and there is, if the panels are eight feet off of the ground, you might be able to see, like, kind of a corner peeking up there, but it's, again, it's really hard to screen that and block that from view without impacting the production, and then as you keep moving it back, you lose the protection of the berms, so where it's at is a really nice balance for that vantage point. The side vantage point, of course, is a lot smaller and.
Right, right.
More minimal.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Other questions for the three of them?
I got one more question, you talked about this being a financial step.
Yeah.
What are you planning to save per, per year? I assume that's. I'm just curious if you have an idea.
I may have initial projections here, but I don't know that it's for year one as much as it might be for the term of the agreement that we estimated.
How many years do you think it's gonna take to, to pay off?
They aren't paying for it. It's not leased. They are only paying for the kilowatt-hours that are produced that are behind the meter that they would have otherwise had to purchase from Amren. The Hoka Tololo will own the asset.
Okay.
For their sole use.
Okay.
We, we.
Because it's Illinois Solar For All, and, yes.
There, there is an option for the church to purchase the, the solar asset at a later point in the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else wishing to ask questions of the petitioners? Okay, you guys can have a seat, thank you. Okay, we will take comments from the audience on this particular case, and keep in mind, if you have looked at those directions that we handed out, you are limited to five, uh, five o'clock, five minutes, sorry about that. And the clock is up in the corner if you want to keep an eye on it for yourself. So, someone from the audience wish to address the ZBA on this particular case? Approach the podium. Hey, can you state your name for me?
Dorive Aldi Credlebaugh.
Okay, and Dorive, in relationship to the solar panel and the church, about how far, where do you live in, in connection with this?
A block and a half, probably, I'm a neighbor.
Okay, and will you go ahead then and raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead.
Mostly I have questions, questions for the people that made the presentation. They did answer one question about the fact that, that by saving this money, that they would be able to do more for the community, and that was one question I had, what was, what was the advantage to the city and to the community for putting this in? And I'm kind of an environmentalist, and I'm concerned a little bit about solar panels. I'm not against them, I'm not for them, I'm kind of a fence sitter, and so I just will ask my questions. How is the land under the solar panel protected, the actual land, if the panels are damaged by some kind of hail or whatever there is? That's one question. The second is, will there be a tall enough fences to keep vandals, which we haven't had much vandalism in the neighborhood, it's a pretty good neighborhood, but it could be very tempting and very dangerous if there is vandalism. So will there be fences to prevent people from having vandalism, doing vandalism? The third question is, can the panels be recycled if the church no longer wants the property for some reason? And the fourth question is for the board, since I think this is the first time that a private, well, not a private, but in, in the city that people are asking for solar panels, is that right?
We've had one other case, it's ground mount requires a special use, so we've had one case that's come through.
Okay. I'm wondering if each person that would like to do, or each entity would, would like to do that, if they always have to come before the board, or if these cases will automatically let other properties come into the city? I'm thinking of a church, a former church property which has a lot of land on Line I Drive, and a lot which is on Indian Circle, the last lot that's left, unless, since it's been built on the last, in the last week. And those are my questions, and I want to thank you all for doing the job that you're doing, it's not always a pleasant job.
I guess to quickly answer the questions, one, the, the panels are hail-resistant. Many people in East Peoria and otherwise have them on their roofs, and obviously the insurance companies are well aware, and they're made to withstand the, the hail. I don't know, maybe Yvonne can answer if the ground underneath is ever contaminated by these solar panels? I would say probably not, but Yvonne, you would, if you want, approach the podium so you can answer that?
Sure.
I would agree with you regarding hail damage, it's the same thing, and, and all hail damage that we've had, which has been really minor, has just cracked the top of the module, and then it's covered by insurance, and we take it and it gets replaced through the insurance program. So no contamination, I'm aware of, for any of the racking system steel that goes down into the ground, we use pile drivers, and the racking manufacturer recommendations determine the depth that it goes down, and then it can be removed, so that, that's not a, a difficult thing to do.
And then if the church would cease to operate, would you come in and get the equipment automatically, I should say, maybe?
If the church were to, let's say they were going to sell the church, which is, which Jacob can speak to, but, but if they were, then they, what we have in the agreement is that the asset goes with the sale.
Okay.
And so whoever would purchase it would have the benefit of the, behind the meter.
Continuing the program.
Right, Illinois Solar For All requires that, that we keep that in service for 15 years, those renewable energy credits from the production of the system are being purchased by utility, and they have the right to all of those environmental attributes.
Okay, thank you. And then to answer your question, Mrs. Credlebaugh, about the.
Sorry, I, I had some questions, but.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Gina, you finish up what you were gonna say, and then I'll ask my questions.
Well, I just wanted to finish Mrs. Credlebaugh's question, she asked if this would set precedent for other people in the community, and that answer is no. Everyone who wishes to put solar on their property and, you know, on the actual ground has to come through this exact same process. Okay, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, so I just wanted to ask a few questions, so. So, I mean, I'm fairly confident from an environmental perspective, actually, that's my background. So, you know, I understand the potential legal implications can be drastic if there's release to groundwater and air from an environmental perspective. So, I have a lot of confidence there. But I guess I am curious, are there potentially hazardous substances, liquid or metal, that could be released if there was, say, a catastrophic failure to the asset panels?
Yeah, none that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then I guess, asking the question about vandalism, I guess, what is the potential for vandalism? Or, I guess, have you seen anything of this nature? And what have those instances been?
Sure, we have three ground mount arrays in the Village of Deer Creek and we've had no vandalism at any of them. None of them are fenced. It's typically the local jurisdiction's preferences that we honor. And so, there, it wasn't on a requirement and they didn't want a fence around it. We have another one, that's a ground mount, that's in Havana, if you're familiar with Mason County area. Similar, they did not want a fence around theirs either. We have a ground mount in Bath as another example. And it is fenced, but the wastewater treatment plant's fenced, so it just is within that area. We have not had any vandalism to any of those systems. And we've got another one at Crossroad Church in Washington, no vandalism. So, that's just not been our experience. If we were going to put something in downtown Peoria and specific areas, we, you know, we would likely consider some screening elements to be protective there. But this isn't an area that, you know, I would anticipate that we would see that kind of activity.
We see worse vandalism from tornadoes than we do from kids and high schoolers and whatnot.
Fair enough. And then I did want to go back to the question about recycling. So, one, they do probably have a lifespan, I suspect. And so, they, you know, they have to be replaced, et cetera. So, damage could potentially be something that would, you know, be a cause. And then also, the useful lifespan of the asset itself. I guess, how does recycling and that kind of stuff work for these types of solar assets?
We don't have anything that's at the end of its useful life at this point. We do have a contact that goes around that that will pick up modules that aren't working, for example, or have otherwise need to be removed. And they're recycling them, but how they do that, I do not have details for.
Okay, so, there's a program in place in the event that these things have to be, whether it's remanufacturing or whatever the case may be, or hazardous waste disposal, whatever the case is? Okay, all right, thank you, that's all.
Anyone have any other questions for these two? No? Okay, anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this particular case? Please approach the podium. Will you state your name for me?
Dan Decker.
And where in proximity to this property do you live?
100 Clover, just west of the property.
Will you raise your right hand for me? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thanks, Dan, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. I came tonight just to listen and I got most of the questions answered. A couple of things, though, that I did have a little bit of concern of is, first of all, I guess this is a question if they don't mind answering. Do you know the height of the berm, the natural berm that's there? The, that the parking lot produces? The reason is, is because those are eight-foot panels. I spoke with somebody that lives across the street in one of the houses who had concern of visualizing those. And I think that although that berm does protect, I think that the eight-foot will make it pretty obvious for them to see. The, another concern I had is that, well, not necessarily a concern. One of my main questions is, what is the need for it to be ground-based or placed on the ground as opposed to on the roof? I don't think I'd have an issue if they are on the roof there throughout the community now. But I heard that the roof is possibly an option. And I think those that I've spoken to that have reservation about this, reservation goes away if it's on the roof. The, I do think it sets a precedent and that's what I'm struggling with throughout the community. I know it doesn't obligate the community to accept other panels that are placed on the ground. But there are some examples throughout our area that are some, cause some big concern, the maintenance and some other issues. But I think the thing that I heard tonight and the reason that caused me to stand and ask the questions was the requirement for 15 years. And what does that mean if, God forbid, and I do like that church, I've been there and I hope it's here for many years. In fact, I hope they use that lot to build a larger building one of these days. But I, my concern is if something happened, and if something happens soon, if that requirement is there for 15 years, does that limit the sale? Does that limit the, what can be done with the property? As we all know, that was a school many years ago. So, those are my concerns. Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the board on this particular case? Will you state your name for me?
Janet Cooper Schmidt.
Okay, and Janet, where in relationship to this property do you live?
I live on Bloomington Road, right across the street.
Okay, will you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, you have five minutes, yes.
My only concern is resale value for my home. I've looked at, on the internet, and there's been studies that it could reduce my resale by 5%. I was wondering if the company knew that was true or, because, you know, we take pride in our property and, you know, if it's going to lower my property, I won't be very happy after being there 26 years. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak to the zoning board on this particular case? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on then to the next case. And that's case V dash 2025 dash 004. And that's the petition of Cody Locke for a variance to allow a six-foot privacy fence in the front yard of property located at 123 and 125 East Autumn Lane. That property ID number is 01-01-25-300-008 and 009. Would the petitioner approach the podium, please? And will you state your name for me?
Cody Locke.
Excellent, Cody. And will you raise your right hand for me? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, and again, we have some schematics and things from you, but go ahead and tell everybody what you'd like to do.
Yeah, so I would just want to build a six-foot privacy fence around the majority of my empty lot, next to the lot my home's on. My backyard is pretty non-existent. The property is on a hill. My house is, depending on which side you're on, is about 15, 20 feet away from that hill. So, I don't have much of a backyard to do anything with, whether it be hosting family, friends, dogs to run around. So, it would allow me to do that and have privacy while doing it. The fence, if put on the property, would expand front into the setback a little bit. So, trying to petition to get that approved.
Questions for Cody, Tim?
I have no questions.
Michael?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
Don?
Yeah, so on this drawing here, we've got the dash in for where your fence is going to be. Do you know how far from the curb or how far from the property line that the fence, that you're planning on the fence being?
Not exactly, like maybe 10, 15-ish feet away or so.
Okay, I think that's all I've got for now, thank you.
So, the 1015 feet, is that behind them two big maples or the fence in front of them?
It'd be just slightly in front of them between the trees and the road.
Okay.
I have like a little hill right off the road, so I want to be able to go right up to it or anything like that, so...
Right. And what kind of fence you putting up?
It'd be wood.
Wood?
Yep.
A solid or...
Yeah.
That's it.
I don't think I have any questions. I guess, other than, in some of our notes, I think the city suggested that maybe you combine the two lots into one tax ID number? Have you started to do that or thought about it or are you agreeable to that?
Yeah, I've thought about doing it. I haven't really done much discussion about it, though.
Okay, that's the only thing I've really had. Okay, I think you're good, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone...
One more quick question for him, sir. Just to clarify, based on Gina's point, so if we did make that a condition, that you needed to combine the parcels into one tax ID, would you be opposed to that?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the zoning board on this particular case? Seeing no one, we will move on to the next case. And that is case SU dash 2025 dash 007. That's the petition of Macy Downey of McBride Dale Clarion for a special use to allow a fueling station on property located at 123, 139, 141 and 143 Everett Street. Property ID 01-01-33-312-011, 012, 013, 015 and 126 Almyron Street. Property ID number 01-01-33-312-014.
I could have sat down a little longer.
Honestly, I'm not so sure, I have to do that, but we did have a member of our zoning board for a long time named Mike Kelly and Mike insisted that we do that, so I'm not going to be the one to quit.
But I'm sorry.
So, will you state your name for me?
Uh, yes, Macy Downey.
You are Macy Downey. Okay, Macy, will you raise your right hand for me? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead.
Uh, yes, so we are requesting a special use for the proposed Kroger Fuel Center at the corner of Everett and Almyron. This is adjacent to the existing Kroger store parking lot. The Fuel Center will have five double-sided dispensers, so you'll have 10 fueling positions on site. There will be a canopy overhead that's about 19 feet tall. There will be a kiosk under the canopy that's about 200 square feet. That will be where the Kroger employee is positioned. It's not meant to be accessible for customers. They'll just pay right out front, outside the kiosk. There's like a bathroom and an office space in there, but again, no customers. Again, the kiosk, you'll have outdoor merchandising, storage containers like iceboxes. There's also merchandisers out between the fuel pumps that'll hold things that you typically find at a convenience store, like, you know, windshield wiper fluid, snacks, drinks, all of which, that are completely enclosed in these merchandisers, locked up at night and adjacent to either a fuel pump or the kiosk. The dumpster is proposed on the kind of eastern, southeastern corner of the lot. It'll be enclosed in a opaque enclosure that'll match the kiosk material. It'll have a gate out front as well. And it will be screened by additional plantings around the outside. As far as landscaping on site goes, we are proposing landscaping that is adequate for the special use requirements of landscaping. Particularly, we clustered a few trees on the corner of the lot, just given the adjacent residential, hoping to kind of screen that a little bit more at that corner. There'll be two types of maple and a tree that has multiple trunks for some variation and difference. Lighting on site will be directed down and won't create glare onto adjacent properties. As far as foot candles and light levels, the light will not spill onto the adjacent residential properties. We feel that the lighting proposed really match it, or meets the requirements for safety on site since you're dispensing fuel while paying mind to the neighbors. Access is proposed off the shopping center parking lot. And on Everett, we do not show direct access to Almyron. Given the adjacent residential, we feel like this will negate some traffic on Almyron. We also see most traffic coming from the store parking lot, giving typically shoppers will combine trips with their trips to the store. So, we anticipate them coming and leaving through the shopping center parking lot. Sinage on site will be limited to the canopy and the kiosk. They'll have their Kroger letters on the canopy and they'll have little cart logos on the canopy and the kiosk. Since this is a Fuel Center site, we do have some pricing, LED pricing panels on the canopy. One of those is proposed facing the shopping center parking lot. Like I said, a lot of, a lot of the trips are tied to the store shoppers, so we want to make sure that they can see the fuel prices when they leave the store. The other LED sign is facing Almyron. We have placed that to the most northeast portion of the canopy to further distance that sign from the residential property. And then, lastly, it's kind of tied to the next case, but we will be proposing a monument sign not on site. It will, well, we're asking for a special use to move that sign to replace the existing Kroger sign. So, we aren't, you know, adding to the visual of the Fuel Center from the, again, the residential properties. And, yeah, we went through a one-stop review. I don't think there were any huge concerns zoning-wise or anything to that extent. These plans are preliminary, we still need to go out and assess utility lines and stuff of that nature. But, yeah, we don't anticipate any variances with this request. And we think it will be a great addition and a great way for people to spend their fuel points in the city.
I have heard that, that people don't like going to Morton to spend their fuel points. Like, okay. Questions for Macy, Tim?
Macy, did you mention the hours of operation by chance and I may have missed it?
I did not. Typically, the Fuel Center will meet the hours of operation of the store. They do allow for credit card transactions after hours.
All right, thank you.
For after hours, is that just 24 hours a day for credit card or...
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have at this moment.
John?
Those two answered the questions I was going to ask, so...
All righty, Don?
Did you guys do any traffic studies at all? I know you're not going to have a lot of increased traffic, but that, that whole area, that whole Kroger area is already very crowded. And I was just curious if anything was done.
We have not done a traffic study for this site. I'm not sure how much a traffic study would affect our driveways and stuff of that nature. But no, we just have some general, you know, traffic that Kroger has seen from other sites that they anticipate for the site, but not specifically for this Fuel Center.
And when you sit down, could you bring the display up to us so we can see it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, the other fuel stations that you have at the other Kroger stores, how much extra trouble has it been? Or have you had problems with them? Or, I mean, I know they're not like this, this is kind of a unique thing, but...
You mean like going through processes with the city or you mean like operating?
Trouble in general from, you know, people causing problems or...
Crime or anything.
Yeah, crime, you know?
Not really my scope of work, but, uh, but, uh, no, I mean, nothing that comes to mind.
Okay. That's all I have.
And I'm happy to see that it's not, you're not wanting to put it on the corner of Maine and Washington, so I'm really happy about that. And excited to have something like this. Guess, I'm trying to think of the one concern I do have... like this. I guess, I'm trying to think of the one concern I do have. Well, and I guess to the board, my concern would be to you all and not to Macy, is we have two buildings sitting there empty, two commercial buildings sitting right on the corner, empty, and if we're worried about traffic, the gas station's going to do one thing, but those two buildings, once they get tenants, will obviously increase the traffic. So I think, you know, this might just be the tip of the iceberg, but at the same time, we've got empty buildings, and so there's still, we're not at capacity of traffic, I think is what I'm trying to say, so.
And I'll also add, typically Fuel Stations, Fuel Centers are more of a traffic capturer than a traffic generator, if that makes sense. So, you know, you're not planning to leave your house and go ten miles out of the way to go get gas. You're doing it when you're shopping, you're doing it when you're going by on Washington, more of a combined trip situation.
Yeah, good point, good point. I don't have any other questions. Any other questions for Macy?
I will bring that closer to you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on this particular case? And this is separate from the next case, which is their sign, and I will call people up for that as well, then. So this is simply for the fueling station. Approach Hello.
Hello.
Hello, will you state your name for me?
My name is Chelsea Parker.
Chelsea Parker, and in relation to the proposed fueling station, whereabouts do you live?
Johnson Street.
Okay.
And I'm also the daughter-in-law of the pastor at the United Methodist Church, so I'm also here on his behalf.
Okay, will you raise your right hand for me, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead.
Awesome. Main concern is, I just bought my house on Johnson Street, and I'm concerned about property value. Stepping out onto my front porch, the, I see the quarter lot, like, that's what I will see. The lights will also probably shine into my front room and my sunroom. It, I don't think a few trees is going to really block, that that will be a part of my view now. So property value is a big thing, the noise, the lights, the added people, especially if it is open twenty-four hours. Also pollution, contamination, just having something that close. We just moved from the bottoms, away from all those factories, to get somewhere cleaner and safer, and away from traffic and crime, so we'd like to keep it that way. Increased traffic, like that has been brought up, that is a concern, living on Johnson Street. It is very, very busy already, and even just a little bit more, people will be going through those side streets, and they are not made for, like, through traffic. And then, increased loitering, crime, there are a lot of teenagers right now. They direct their energy at the levee, which can take the hit, so just considering all of that. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience having comments about this case?
Hello.
Hello, will you state your name for me?
Hello, my name is Tara Young, and I live on 201 Johnson Street, which is the corner.
Okay.
Right with Almaron.
Okay, will you raise your right hand for me, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead.
All right, so I was here when they made the decision to tear down all those houses. I have lived on Johnson for quite a while, so I know you guys are going to decide whatever you're going to decide, no matter what we say, because we had a huge group that time, you know, against it. So, I just want to say that everything she covered is pretty much what I have to say, and I did a deep dive with the environmental concerns, and there are a lot of studies that have been done that show a link between childhood leukemia in proximity to gas stations, fueling stations, and these have been done all over the world. I found this on various medical websites and things like that. My other concern is the traffic. We have so much traffic, and it has increased since I have lived there, since you guys have allowed the Dunkin' Donuts, tenfold. People blow through those stop signs like it's nothing. They don't care, and that is a big concern. I know that I have had neighbors that have asked for speed bumps to be put in, and they said that nothing's come of it. I don't know if that's true or not, that's just what I've been told. We have children that play constantly in the neighborhood. It's fantastic. It's like the neighborhood I grew up in in the eighties and nineties. Kids ride their bikes, kids are safe, you know, neighbors know each other, and when you bring in a place like an extra, whatever it be, fueling station, or even another business, you have to deal with increased crime, and fueling stations bring a lot of crime. They do, and that is a known fact. In fact, like, I think I got on like an FBI or government website that said they call them hotspots, where they do attract crime. I don't like the fact that it's open twenty-four hours. That bugs me. I like that she is concerned about the residential neighborhood, that she is planning to put things in place to kind of buffer, but already Kroger has a huge amount of light source coming from them, and I can no longer see a night sky where I used to, and it has gotten worse. They have put in these huge lights with these huge flashing blue lights, and they're not even open twenty-four hours anymore. So what kind of light pollution is that going to cause when you add a fueling station and you have even more light shining? But I guess, ultimately, like I said, you guys are going to decide whatever you're going to decide, and I'm thankful that we are allowed to come up here and talk, because this is what is great about America, that we get the chance to do this. But I have to live there, and I thought this was going to be my forever home. I love East Peoria, I do, but I am starting to get a little bit concerned about the progress we're making, and I love this. I think this is a great library. I love all the restaurants, all the stores, because I'm an eater, I'm a shopper. But I think that residential places should be kept separate from commercial, and I know that's not where you guys want to head. I know that it's kind of changing. But as somebody that wanted to live there forever, until she dies or ends up in a nursing home, I don't want my property values to go way down, and I also don't want my taxes to go way up, you know? And I'm worried that the more you guys are moving in close to me, the more that is going to be what happens. Nobody's going to want to buy my house if I have a gas station down the road. Nobody's going to buy my house if, if I've got like another building that's going up across the street even. And just a side note, I do love the area that, I would love to see Main Street a little bit revitalized, because that would be really nice, like Washington Square. And I love those shops that are there already. If we could have more variety of what we have in East Peoria, that would be fantastic. I know that has nothing to do with this, but, you know, you guys are making a lot of progress here, and it is somewhat making me nervous. But thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the board on this particular case? Can you state your names for me?
Penny Gore.
Can you spell your last name?
G-O-R-E.
Okay, and?
Jimmy Gore.
Jimmy Gore, okay. And in relation to the proposed fueling station, where do you all live?
We are on Everett Street, about two hundred yards from where they're going to be building it.
Okay, and will you both raise your right hands for me, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, pretty much our concerns have already been discussed by the other two that came up, but we are on Everett Street, and the traffic, again, is horrendous down that street, just from people using that to get to Kroger and back. So that is one of our main concerns, is the traffic, like, tenfold, because it's already bad down there to begin with. So I don't, I don't know exactly, like, I couldn't see her map of, she was saying that they would come out from the gas station into the parking lot and Everett Street, but I don't think if somebody's leaving the gas station, they're going to exit and go into the parking lot to leave to Main Street. They're going to use...
Your street's a shortcut.
Exactly. Our street, our, our street in front of our, our homes is going to be the shortcut to get out, not through the, through the parking lot. So, you have anything to say?
Concerns I have would be, would there be any kind of barrier around the property to help with like containing garbage? Because where we live, we're on the south side of the road. Ever since those houses were tore down.
We get all of...
Extra Kroger at all. It just, the wind takes it down there, so I see that they're, you know, I see that they're planning on doing landscaping, but if there's anything there to help collect with the garbage, that would be great. And then with the, the lighting, if, would the lights, would the lights be dimmed once they're so-called closed? Are they going to be on the whole time, like, operating, you know, operating hours, are they going to be that bright the whole time, or just, you know, the hours that they're open, and then after ten o'clock, they dim down, or something like that?
They'll be on to some degree if they're open twenty-four hours for credit card purchases.
So is there going, is there going to be somebody there after hours? So if there's a problem with the pump or credit card issues, then you're just...
The way Macy explained it, it was manned for so many hours of the day, and then it went to twenty-four hour credit card.
So then if there's a problem, then you're just SOL, and you can't get gas, then?
I, that's the, that's a question for Kroger.
Right. I mean, it would just make sense for it to be the same hours as the gas, or as the grocery store, but...
Well, I think that's what she said. But it's also twenty-four hour credit card.
Right. So...
So then with the lighting, would the lighting have like, would the lighting be backed to, like, the church and just be facing, like, towards Kroger and Main Street? Is that one way we're thinking?
I think all the lighting will be coming down.
The lighting goes straight down.
Yeah, I don't think so. It's going to spill.
If you've looked at some of like the newer streetlights that we have in East...
But it's still going to be extremely brighter.
Go ahead.
Uh, it, no matter where the light is, it's just going to be that much brighter on our neighborhood. So, anything else that you want to say?
That was it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the board on this particular Okay, you state your name for me?
My name is Lori Test.
How you spell your last name?
T-E-S-T, like an exam.
Okay, and Lori will, oh, in relationship to the fueling station, or proposed fueling station?
I live right on Everett Street, 220. I live next to the Goers.
All righty, and will you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Um, I understand they want to build this. I'm very sorry that they're going to build this because environmental concerns, traffic. That, like I said, it's a street, I bought it because it was a street with families. It's a working-class neighborhood. It's quiet at night. Unfortunately, you know, since they've torn all that, that neighborhood apart, there is a ton of traffic, and people don't stop at the stop signs. That's a chronic issue. I'm concerned about crime. Also, I know some of my neighbors have had their, you know, there's not a lot of parking on our street, but they, some people have to park on the street, and some of the neighbors have had their cars hit. I know Jimmy had his van hit. Another neighbor, a couple of their neighbors had their cars hit. You know, people speed through that street, and it was hit and run. They just leave these cars, they hit them and they leave. And again, it's property investment. When I bought my house, this library was going to be built, where that, where that engineering firm was. They were going to build that library there. I bought my house based on those decisions. They wound up moving it here, which is nice, but I used to walk there with my daughter, and now, now you have to drive. I'm concerned where everything's going. As far as the landscaping, maple trees lose their leaves. We need something that's going to really screen. I don't want to see this thing. I, you know, it's going to be right there. The light is not going to be good. I'm concerned about safety, like, after hours. You know, I, it's, it's very disappointing. I was hoping they'd drop it. I also am reading in the news that they're closing, they're closing a lot of Kroger stores. They're not doing so well right now. What is a gas station going to say? We have gas stations all over here. Costco has one. You know, it's not that far of a drive. You get in your car, you drive. As for fuel points, I don't use it. I don't shop at Krogers, and after this, I really don't shop at Krogers. Most of my neighbors, we shop in Washington and Walmart. In the Morton, we either go to the, I personally go there because the traffic in those areas, even in the, like, the Krogers there in Morton is much easier to shop, as well as Washington. The parking lot here is a disaster. Also, the trash it generates. Every day I come home, I'm picking up trash out of our yards, because there's trash all over. It just blows right in. I don't, I feel like our neighborhood's the forgotten neighborhood, and it's actually a nice little neighborhood. A lot of people aren't aware of this, but that's where a lot of the first CAT execs lived, in these little, in this little neighborhood. It, it's a cute little neighborhood. It might not have the most expensive homes, but this is where I chose to make my investment. Like this other lady said, I love this house. I plan on dying it. I'm happy with my house, too, but with the changes they're make, going to make is not, I'll never be able to sell this house. I'll never get the value out of my house, no matter what I put into it. I've had neighbors that went to refinance after they first said they were going to do this and started tearing down houses, and they were not, their property val, their home's value dropped because of that, and they said, when you build that, they would not loan them the amount of money that they wanted to do, to fix up their home. So people are, you know, why would they put any more money into a house that they're not going to, you know, they're not going to get it, resell back on it. It's, it's extremely disappointing, and I would hope somebody on this board would care about that. We have enough gas stations, we really do. And environmentally, yes. They, I work at a hospital, and they're seeing a lot of links to things environmentally that cause asthma in children, as well as the leukemia and other things. These are not things that people, when they're looking to buy a house, say, wow, I really want my house next to that gas station. It's got ten pumps. I'm so excited about that. I want my car washed and my gas station nowhere near it. And when I first bought that house, there were separation, they even had like a wall to separate the neighborhood a little bit. All that's been pulled down, and they, you know, the little shops there, I don't see shops wanting to go up by a gas station. Whoever wants to develop that on the corner there, that's a quaint little corner. If they were hoping to do something with it, this is not it. And I, like I said, I'm just disappointed. I feel like this, what this lady said is true. We're coming up here again. We saw what happened last time. They just bulldozed it through without any consideration, and Krogers didn't do anything with this for years. If they were, you know, and where are they going to be? What happens when they close? That gas station will be, still be there. Somebody else will own it. Do we really need, like I said, we have all these gas stations. Do we really need another one? I feel like there could be better use for that property than that, and Krogers has not come, you know, they're going to expand, they're going to do this and that. They did none of that. They have changed all their plans, and to me, if they were going to buy land, I would have bought across the street, because that's where everything is. It's closer to the levee district. Then they could have planned that the way they wanted it, and maybe controlled some of the traffic. The traffic goes through there constantly. I know I talked to two neighbors on Stewart. They are also concerned. A lot of people are on vacation right now, so they're not going to be here to complain about this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the zoning board on this particular case? Okay. We will move on to the next case, and that's case SU-2025-008. That's petition of Macy Downey of McBride Dale, now my context getting Clarion, for a special use to allow the expansion of a non-conforming sign on property located at 201 South Main Street, Do I need to swear again?
Switch gears.
Swear her in again?
Yes.
I'm done. Okay. Macy, you can go ahead. I don't need to swear you in again.
Okay. Okay, so our second request tonight is for a special use permit to allow the replacement and expansion of a non-conforming sign. Currently, Kroger has a freestanding sign out on East Washington Street. Believe there were photos in the packets of the existing sign. They're proposing to replace that sign with a new sign that includes the fuel prices similar to those that are found on the canopy. The, the non-conformance comes from the distance to the South Main and East Washington intersection. The additional area is needed just to advertise those fuel signs. This will also bring the sign up to the new Kroger branding, which I think the store already reflects, so it'll be the blue logo. The sign is a... The sign is 179.6 square feet, um, 13 feet tall with a two-foot base. This will, um, other than the distance requirement, meet the height and size requirements, um, of the zoning code, given that there's approximately 900, uh, feet of frontage for the Kroger store. It's my understanding that this regulation was put in place to, um, declutter signage throughout that intersection. We believe that the replacement of the sign will make, um, make the existing sign look better and, um, not create additional freestanding signs, um, in the area.
Questions for Macy, Tim?
Sorry, no questions.
Michael?
Also, sorry.
Good.
If I can, um, also meant to add that Kroger is seeking to replace this sign, um, instead of add a monument sign to the fuel site to, um, hopefully be a better neighbor, um, to the adjacent residential. Typically, they do have the monument sign at the corner, um, but found this option to be a win-win for everybody.
Michael?
No questions.
John?
No questions.
Don?
So, um, is this new sign also gonna be, it's gonna be based on the ground, correct?
On the ground?
Yes.
Yes.
And how, approximately how big is the old sign, do you know?
Um, we have not done a survey of the existing sign, um, so I'm not exactly sure how large that is.
And how, and, and the new sign is 13 feet tall?
Yes, with the two-foot base.
So two-foot base and then 13-foot or 13-foot total?
No, including the two-foot base.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
George?
I don't have any questions.
I don't think I have any questions regarding the sign, but while you're at the podium Macy and you have the microphone, is there anything you heard from the concerns of the neighbors or anything that you would like to address?
Um, yeah, just, um, generally Kroger operates about 1,700 locations for the fuel centers, um, and generally has no issues operating them. They do exceed EPA requirements and are, um, required obviously to get all state permits for, um, their underground storage tanks and anything of that nature. This is in the B3 zone, so if not a fuel center, you know, um, other businesses are permitted in this district. And we do believe that this is a great investment to this area, um, and will hopefully spur some development, you know, on the corner and, um, throughout the area. We do have the attendant to help with trash and do have trash cans by the pumps, um, as well as a dumpster on-site in close prox- proximity.
So, is there any change in lighting during the time of the day? Or is it still lit pretty much the same 24/7?
It would be lit pretty much the same, um, just given, you know, the, um, activity that's going on with the fuel dispensing, um, and just to maintain safety on-site, um, making sure everybody is clearly seeing what they're doing when they're fueling their vehicles.
Right. You mentioned that what you believed was most of the traffic would come from the Kroger parking lot, which is off of Washington or off of Main. And in your description, I might've gotten a little confused, but is there anything you're doing with the design of the fueling station to limit or deter traffic coming in from Everett?
Coming in from Everett, uh, not necessarily. I mentioned that we do not have an access on Almiron.
Okay.
Um, so that, I guess, is the limiting factor there. But yes, we do have driveways proposed on Everett, so, um, thought process was that just, you know, the shopping center would draw people in from the shopping center, um, and Everett is essentially a, an extension of the shopping center.
Okay. I think that's all I have, are other questions for Macy? Thank you, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
And I guess I have a question for Ty before we ask for, uh, members of the audience. So, as Macy mentioned, this property is Zone B3. So if Kroger isn't allowed to put a fueling station in here, what other types of businesses could go in without any approval?
So, in this overlay district, so the four corners overlay district, there is a, an additional provision that speaks to any auto-oriented use would have to come through for a special use. Typically, in cases of the fueling station, that is pretty much universal throughout the city, but in this district, any auto-oriented use would be required to do that. But you could have a restaurant use without a drive-through, you could have other types of uses like that that would be permitted, uh, within this zoning classification.
A dollar general?
Retail, yeah, any sort of retailer would be allowed.
Go ahead, John.
I went up to Morton and looked around what they did up there, with their fueling station at Krogers. And they restrict their, uh, which probably needs to be done, even if they don't build a fueling station of the traffic around that area. They've changed the traffic pattern where...
You gotta go left.
Oh, yeah, you do.
You can't go right.
Yeah, and they don't, they don't tolerate.
That's been like that for years.
Yeah, since Kroger's been put in.
Right, but not since the gas station.
No.
But since they built Krogers and everything, they don't allow it.
So, what are you suggesting here? Some sort of prohibition on...
I don't know.
Left out only, or?
I don't know. It's always been like that ever since I was a kid, unfortunately. It's just an idea, just thought.
I think it's certainly fodder for the, the board to discuss. As far as how you'd handle that, and, and a lot of it comes with design and then on the backend is enforcement.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on this particular case, meaning the sign? Seeing no one, okay. We will proceed then with deliberations and we will go back then to the first case. And that is, whoops. And that'll be case V-2025-003. The address is 135 Shoshone Drive, the petitioner is Kelly Spangler. Will a significant hardship result to the owner if the strict letter of the regulations are carried out, given the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the property?
Yes.
Yep.
Is it an inconvenience to the property owner to follow the regulations of the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the variance requested based upon the unique, uniqueness of the property?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the variance based exclusively on the desire to make more money out of the property?
No.
No.
Will the variance be injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood?
No.
No.
Has the alleged difficulty or hardship been created by any persons presently having an interest in the property and thus self-imposed?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variation impair the adequate supply of light and/or air to the adjacent property?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variation increase the congestion of the public street?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variation create additional traffic safety problems?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variation increase the danger of fire to adjacent structures?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variance substantially diminish or impair property values within the immediate neighborhood?
No.
No.
Will the variance be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety morals, comfort, or general welfare?
No.
No.
Would the variance request be generally applicable to other properties within the immediate area?
No.
No.
Discussion, or do I have a motion?
I've got a question, Brad. Can you, do you mind pulling that up on the GSI, G.I.S. website and give an idea of how close that property line is to the street? Just approximately. When, when I, when I looked at it, it's, it's a pretty good distance, maybe 10 feet.
From what exactly?
From the street, from the curb to the property line.
Based on what I can see, it's, I measured a couple different locations, it's between 10 and 12 feet in different spots.
Okay. And, um, Ty, the fences, setback requirements on fences is five foot, is that correct? And is that on, is that on front, side, and back?
No, so the front here with the, they're talking about a privacy fence.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just talking about a regular fence, what is...
So if it was a four-foot chain link, it could be right up on the, the lot line even in front.
Oh, okay. And, and so all, all four sides are like that, tend to, okay.
Any more discussion, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the, for, uh, a 10-foot setback from the curb. And they can have up to a six-foot solid fence.
I'll second.
Do you want it to be 10 foot from the curb or 10 foot or the property line, whichever is further away?
Yeah, let's say 10 foot or the property line.
I'll second.
I agree.
Roll call, vote.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
Broschiers?
Yes.
Brunner?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, the variance has been approved, so you can come in and get your permit. Variances don't go beyond tonight.
Okay, deliberations for the next case is SU-2025-006. That's 304 South Pleasant Hill Road. And the petitioner is Yvonne Long on, uh, in behalf of Hakatolo for, uh, solar panels on the ground at, uh, the church located there. After conducting a public hearing, considering the facts, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of fact and recommendation. Will the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare?
No.
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
No.
Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
No.
Or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities to be or been provided?
Yes.
Or have adequate measures to be or been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site, minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Yes.
Do I have discussion or a motion?
Sure, I'm good.
Go ahead, good.
First of all, uh, I wanna thank everybody for coming out and speaking out on this and the Kroger one. I think those were the, the two big ones tonight. I, I really appreciate that, coming out and, and letting us know what you think. For this and the Kroger, one thing to remember is that, um, these will move on to the city council, so the final, um, decision is not tonight, it will be at the city council. You're welcome guys back there. But, uh, so, we're just the first step on this. The... So, the thing for me on this is, is not as big as I thought it might be. It's a 13, it's one strip, 13-foot, 102-feet long. There was, uh, one person who talked about property values, I have no idea, I haven't looked into it. But my, but my thought is on that, um, that might be for the, if the entire field was, uh, full of these panels. This is just one little panel that isn't gonna be, um, that prominent in the, in, in the property line. And so that's, that's just the thoughts I had. I'll let others speak.
Well, I think the thing that came up, there was a question, uh, maybe two, uh, about putting these panels on the roof and just like putting these on your home, um, if your roof needs to be repaired, you have, there's a cost incurred with removing these panels and then putting them back on the house after the roof repairs are done. I, I find that a little detrimental to the goal of the church. I mean, they're trying to save some money to actually put back into the community. The roof is in okay shape, but then that also means to me that the cost of removing the panels and putting them back on might be sooner rather than later and, um, I feel that's somewhat of a, a burden on, uh, a, a church trying to do some great things in their neighborhood and for our community. So I think that was a concern, but I think actually Yvonne or somebody actually addressed that when they were up here. Somebody might've missed it. I don't have anything else.
I'll just make one quick comment and, uh, just agreeing with what Don mentioned about all of the very well-thought-out comments from the public tonight. And I know that Dan will have an opportunity to vote on this himself, so, uh, you know, that's, that's a good thing there as well. But I did specifically appreciate his comment related to potential limitations, uh, of the property, if it was sold to another party and what impacts that could have related to having that solar asset there, um, for, you know, building and things like that. So, I did appreciate the comment, um, just wanted to mention that.
Any other comments or concerns, or do I have a motion?
Uh, my only concern is, um, on the Bloomington Road end of the solar panels. I think it'd be nice if we had, um, some foliage there to kinda like hide it. I mean, it, that, is that, you know, like, like Leland cypresses, they grow fast, they're not expensive and you can cut them off at the height that you want them at. Once they get to that height, you can just cut them off and they'll stay that way. And, and so, you know, I think it, that way, people driving down Bloomington Road and the people that live on Bloomington Road doesn't have to look at this.
Maybe include that in your motion?
I was gonna say, if you make, if you make a motion, then I would second it and support it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that, uh, that we approve this with the condition on the Bloomington roadside that there would be foliage, uh, I'd say 6 to 8 feet to hide the solar panels from the Bloomington roadside.
I'll second.
And then what if we find that that 6 to 8 feet casts a shadow on the solar panels? Okay, okay, just throwing it out there. Okay, we have a motion on the table.
Roll call?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
Broschiers?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes and we'll go to city council.
Now, city council, we're on the same cycle as the council this week, their meeting is tomorrow night, so this will not appear until the August 5th meeting day, the first reading.
Okay, so we're on to the next meeting, or meeting, hopeful thinking. We're on to the next case and that is V-2025-004. And that's the petition of Cody Lockit, 123 and 125 East Autumn Lane. Will a significant hardship result to the owner if the strict letter of the regulations are carried out, given the particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographical conditions of the property?
Yes.
Is it an inconvenience to the property owner to follow the regulations of the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the variance requested based upon the uniqueness of the property?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the variance based exclusively on the desire to make more money out of the property?
No.
Will the variance be injurious to other property? Will the variance be injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood?
No.
No.
Has the alleged difficulty or hardship been created by any persons presently having an interest in the property and thus self-imposed?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variation impair the adequate supply of light and/or air to adjacent property?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variation increase the congestion of the public street?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variation create additional traffic safety problems?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variation increase the danger of fire to adjacent structures?
No.
No.
Will the proposed variance substantially diminish or impair property values within the immediate neighborhood?
No.
No.
Will the variance be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare?
No.
No.
Would the variance request be generally applicable to other properties within the immediate area?
No.
No.
Any comments, concerns, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve case V-2025-004 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Oh, wait, can I withdraw that? Sorry, Don, Don, you, did you have any setback? Yeah, I didn't know if you had any setback concerns.
So, well, what I was thinking of doing is, same thing as the other one, this one, the property line seems to be closer to the street than the other one, potentially based on the lines I see. So I was thinking the same thing, 10 feet from the curb or the road, I'm not sure if this road's got a, or got a curb.
No.
There's no curb.
No curb, so 10 foot from the road. And then I'm also thinking on the, I assume that's west side, it appears to me that the neighbor, the neighbor's got some yard work or landscaping or something that may actually be going over the property line, based on what the line sees, what, how the line shows on the GSI, GIS website, I know that isn't necessarily completely accurate. So my thought would be 10 foot from the front, 10 foot from the road on the front, and 5 foot from the property line on the side. I will say, based on the line sketch that is on this drawing, 10 foot probably isn't going to be a problem, and we're probably real close on that, on that 5 foot on the west side.
Would that be the south side? The 5-foot property lines on the south side?
Is it south or west?
Oh, west, I'm sorry.
It's west. South side would be the street side.
Yep, sorry. Okay, so, if I...
Oh, and then, these are two lots, are you gonna...
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, just a moment. So just want to make sure I captured everything, so no closer than 10 feet to the road, 5 feet from the property on the west lot line, and combine the two properties into one. Would that be accurate?
That's what I'm thinking, if you agree.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll go ahead and make a motion with the following conditions, the fence can be placed no closer than 10 feet to the road, no closer than 5 foot from the property line to the west, and combining the two properties into one.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Don. Roll call, vote.
Driscoll.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Tippett.
Yes.
Broschiers.
Yes.
Brunner.
No.
Kelly. That case two is also a variance, so that ends here, you can come in for your permit when you're ready.
It's a done deal. Okay, we'll move on then to deliberations for case SU-2025-007. That address, or addresses are 123, 139, 141, and 143 Everett Street, and 126 Almaron Street. The petitioner is Macy Downey of McBride Dale Clarion, on behalf of Kroger for a fueling station. Will the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare?
Arguments to it.
Yes.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
Again, arguments made.
Maybe.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
Who knows?
Again, arguments made on the case.
Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
No.
Or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities to be or been provided?
Yes.
Yes.
Or have adequate measures to be or been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site, minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
No.
It's been argued.
Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Yes.
Comments, concerns? You look like you're thinking of something, we want to hear it.
I'll just make one very quick comment, and, you know, as mentioned, Kroger stores, and they have announced closings nationwide, and one concern that I have, to be entirely honest, is if we don't approve this, and I'm not saying that this is a reason to or not approve it, you know, what would that mean potentially for their interest in, you know, continuing to keep that store open? Would it impact their sales? Will it improve their sales? You know, so the fate of that store could be, could potentially be in jeopardy without the approval, but again, that's, I don't have insights on that really, I'm just making a comment related to it.
So I'll make a comment here, we already have a example of what Kroger has failed to do with tearing down homes that could have been viable for people to live in, and now that's an empty lot, nothing's there today. I'm probably against this, and if I was to be for it, I feel like Everett Street would need to be blocked, so through traffic couldn't come into the neighborhood, to help with the concerns that the residents had brought up this evening. But those are my comments as of right now.
I think my concern is if the fueling station doesn't go in a business like, I hate to say it, Dollar General, would go in there, I think the neighbors are still going to have some complaints, but I agree with Michael that I would probably be willing to approve the fueling station or anything else if there could be some sort of control with the traffic on Everett Street. I mean, I like that idea, and that's where I would probably for sure say yes, however...
So...
Go ahead. It was just the end of way I ended my sentence. However...
So whoever brought the one up in Morton, as you go out the one-way towards like McDonald's and Morton, there's a sign that says you can't take a right-hand turn, left turn only, and it is solely so you don't go into the residential. So I'm not sure about blocking off Everett, I don't know if they would, the residents on Everett would even want that necessarily, but you could do some kind of a thing where you're coming out of the gas station, you couldn't take a left to go through Everett, you'd just have to take a right to go back into Kroger.
That, oh, sorry, I thought you were done.
No, go, no, I basically am too.
I like the idea, and I'm a environmental health and safety manager, and signs are like the least desired control, and just want to point out, just pointed out, because I agree, in an ideal world, we'd love to put up a sign, and everybody follows it, and, you know, we get the best of both worlds, Kroger's happy, you know, our citizens are happy, but I think we already do this over by the Chick-fil-A, and barely anybody recognizes that sign.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Pretty sure it's a right, it's a right-only, am I wrong about that, Ty? I'm fairly certain.
Or the entrance to Kohl's originally, you know, nobody paid attention to the lines.
So to be fair, that was placed by the property owner.
Oh, yeah, that's totally fair, yep, that's totally fair. So, that's a good point, that it wasn't a condition of their, of the property or anything like that.
So does the board want to ask the petitioner to come back with a traffic plan? Or something that addresses concerns of how are you going to manage traffic or ensure that it, you know, typically accesses? I mean, I think they can probably provide information about other stores, but, you know, what other steps can be taken to minimize the impact on the neighbors?
Yeah.
It sounds like that's a concern that the group shares.
Yeah, because the other comment I'll make really quickly on that same note is if we do tell them, hey, you need, you can't have accesses to and from Everett, then we might as well ask them to put up some kind of, you know, more physical barrier that blocks the site of that property from the adjacent residents.
Yeah, if you pull out of the gas station, you have to turn right to go back to Kroger's parking lot, and then go out.
Yeah, so which, in that case, I feel like they should just come back, you know, potentially with some additional options, additional site plan options, and, you know, we take those up for consideration.
I was thinking like some of the blocks that are over, off of Main Street in Peoria, where you can't go any further into the neighborhood.
Traffic diverters, yeah.
Yeah. Is...
Yeah, but that's, that's way beyond anything we can do here, right?
Well, but is, is traffic our main concern? I mean, am I looking at all of you and thinking, if we can ask them to come back with a traffic solution, is that going to be the solution, or are there too many other concerns that the neighbors have presented tonight? And I think...
Traffic is the big one.
I agree, I agree.
It's not necessarily the only one, if you said... It might be a help, I think what we're trying to do is find a way, because we all get, I understand the plight of the neighbors, I completely get that, and traffic would be a big part of that, but obviously there are other issues as well. But like was brought up, there are a number of stores, if this was, I assume Kroger owns this property right now, if they were to sell the property, there's a number of stores that could go in there without ever having to come to us and have any public discussion. Is that correct, Ty? There's a number of...
That's correct.
Yeah.
So I would just add, hour of operations would also be nice to talk about, understanding that, yes, they close, there's not a person there, but still allowing 24-hour purchases with a credit card. I just, I don't know, that might be helpful, since there is so much residential right there as well, just to help have a more of a compromise for the community that's right there. And we would have to talk to, with Puffy Works as well, I mean, I'm not sure if you guys are okay with blocking that roadway. I would also be interested in seeing actual traffic counts, like on the ground today, to see how many people are actually utilizing Everett Street right now.
Specific to this project, you could, and this, I know this would change their site layout some, but Everett is a public street.
Right, no, I understand.
So a...
You'd have to vacate.
A possible solution for, you know, at least for this particular use, would be no access onto the public street, that the access has to be achieved through the parking lot, which doesn't make it as...
Parking lot only and not Everett at all.
Easy to navigate, right.
When I don't think that really, doing it that way, Ty, would sat, would be that compromise for the community, because they already have existing traffic issues.
Correct.
So I, I mean, if we're going to do something, I feel like we'd need to do it all the way to help with traffic, that's the only way that I would even consider supporting it.
So you could, any of you could make a motion to deny the petition and allow the petitioner to come back with something that might be more favorable to the neighbors. That's just, I'm throwing that out there, not saying you gotta do it.
Well, what we need is like we have across the street here, where you pull out of...
Target.
Target across, you have to go right, no choice, it's like, I don't know if this...
I won't say it works 100% of the time.
Right.
I don't think it works at all.
It's a very aggressive island, that, I mean, there, there are ways to do it, most places don't like to completely cut that off.
Right.
McDonald's has actually a fairly well aggressively built traffic island that prevents, you know, well, prevents is a strong word, significantly deters, significantly deters people from attempting to pull in the inappropriate direction or the direction they don't want. Just a couple of other comments related to this case, I want to point out, if you look along, what is that, Main, maybe I'm really terrible with our street names, so I apologize, but, sorry, Washington, there's at least, or there used to be a fueling station there, and then I also believe there's a, like a Quick Lube type shop, that are both similar uses, in my opinion, to the proposed use of this property, and there's residential properties in extremely close proximity to those properties also. Again, that's, it's not a right, wrong, or indifferent, it's just factual comments about, in relation to that general neighborhood in and of itself.
Can I muddy the waters a little further? That was supposed to be a joke, but I guess, I said, can I muddy the waters a little further? One thing Ms. Downey had said is that she didn't think that this would attract additional traffic, it's mainly just the Kroger traffic, and I can, I can see that. And so if that's the case, then the traffic issues we're talking about aren't going to be increased, they're going to be similar, maybe not increased, we don't, don't know for sure. And then if that's the case, then we're just, we're looking at the idea of there being a gas station, and we're looking at the lights as maybe the, another concern. So we were talking about traffic, I agree with it, but maybe it isn't going to be increased, it's probably too much already, but then we're looking at, and, and, you know, we've all seen the, the, the gas station island, that's just big old bright lights, and I assume that's not going to be the case here, and it's going to be a lot less than that, but still, and I wonder if, does anybody know what Kroger's hours are? Does anybody look that up? 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM? Okay, seven days a week? Okay. So maybe that would, restricting the lights to be on during those times only, might be an option.
You do make some really good points there, Don, related to the, you know, the traffic, and I would probably tend to agree with you, I don't think people are specifically going out of their way to utilize the Kroger gas station unless you're a Kroger shopper, and then in that case, you're probably frequenting that store if you live in the city of East Peoria fairly regularly, so, those are really, really, you know, they're great comments, because we need to consider that also.
Yeah, I agree, I just was, I have a question, before the homes were tore down, was Everett Street a through street into that parking lot, or was it blocked off? It was a through street?
Yeah.
When were the homes torn down, approximately? 2010? That one I'm hearing?
You can make a motion to approve or deny. I can't make a motion.
I know.
I can only vote.
I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to deny the request and ask them to come back with some more options, specifically on access to Everett Street, and helping to make an accommodation or a compromise with the neighbors that have brought up concerns with traffic and congestion in the area.
Can you add lighting to that, too?
Sure, I will add lighting to that as well.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Don. Roll call, then.
Driscoll.
Yes? Because I'm...
You're supporting the...
The motion.
Right.
Okay, sorry, me and Robert.
Whitman.
Yes.
Tippett.
Yes.
Broschiers.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Kelly. So then the sign request is linked to the previous case, so whether the board would want to defer that until...
Do we need a motion, though, to actually defer? Do we need a motion, though, to actually defer it?
Yes, if that's, that's your choice.
So, if we're wanting Kroger to come back with a new plan for the gas station, does somebody want to make a motion to defer case SU-2025-008 about the sign?
We just have to deny it again, right?
Defer.
No, defer.
You can defer it?
Make a motion to defer it.
Because I have, I have no...
Well, that's what I was going to ask, you make a motion to table, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion that we table case SU-2025-008 until the representative of Kroger can come up with a proposed solution for case SU-00, no, sorry, case SU-2025-007.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, I think that's the only, the appropriate way to do it, instead of them coming back with the sign to the city council.
Right, or approving a sign that goes through, and then the gas station never goes. Roll call vote.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
Broschiers?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, we move on with the next item on the agenda, and that would be old business. Does anybody have any old business? Next agi, uh, next item on the agenda is new business, does anybody have any new business? Okay, next item on the agenda is the citizen's opportunity to address the ZBA on a non-agenda item. Does anyone in the audience wish to address us on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one? Holding my breath. Okay, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn so that we can all enjoy the rest of the Home Run Derby.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is, the motion passes, we are adjourned, thank you.